Committee of the whole is called to order. My colleagues, we are now at the amendment section. And I know for a fact, we have one amendment from Senator Duñez. If I'm correct, there's five amendments that were submitted by Senator Perez. Am I correct, Senator Perez? You have five, right? Okay. Senator Tello?
Mr. Chair, I also have one amendment, and it's already sent to the clerks.
All right. My colleagues, there's a total of eight of us here. Word of caution. An amendment introduced. It doesn't pass, we may reconsider it. Or if you like, we can wait patiently for another 10 minutes for other colleagues to show up. If there are no objections?
No. Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair, it might be feasible if we do that. It's an important legislation, so I think we need everyone here.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. We'll just recess for exactly 10 minutes. So at 3:15, we will start with whoever's here. All right? Thank you. (pause) (audio cuts out) 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 As you know, Gita was representing to us that, I think, basically, no matter where they go, of course, there will be varied degrees of infrastructure requirements. But at least for now, the anticipation, if it does come to fruition, the Eagles Field area up in Mingila, there will be extensive upgrades as far as infrastructure. And so, obviously, it wouldn't make much sense to go and construct a hospital without having and ensuring that the infrastructure requirements and upgrades are done either simultaneous or just before the construction, so that when the completion of the facility is done, it has the ability to hook up to all requisite infrastructure. We all know, of course, the water. There may be increased water size in terms of lines to be brought in. There may be additional power accommodations, depending on how deep into the property and the like things are going to be done. I would envision that they would probably want to do as much underground work as possible. And so, this amendment surely does, in my opinion, you know, make a statement by this legislature that the priority is the hospital. But like I said, if some of my colleagues may see that the language is somewhat permissible, I kind of wanted to put it out there that it was because in consultation, there was an advice that, you know, please do not put something in there that actually could create a situation whereby if we needed financing for infrastructure and the like to start the project, you know, it would make it problematic in terms of marketing. So that's the amendment. Mr. Chairman, look forward to the discussion on the amendments. This is my see. Thank you, Senator Duñez. Does anyone like to speak to the amendment proffered by Senator Duñez? I see no hands. Madam Speaker?
Yes, I guess I just wanted to confirm. This is, it's talking about prioritizing application of the net proceeds of the bonds. But my understanding is, we're not getting bonds. We are allowing the developer or the contractor to get the bonds. And so, yeah, I don't think we will. That's why, I guess, if the author would yield, I would just ask him to explain, yeah. That's what I was trying to get Gita to explain to us this morning as well. So my understanding of their explanation is that we are not getting any bonds or any proceeds from bonds, but Gita is going to do something that allows the contractor to go out and get, you know, bonds where they work with these tax-exempt bonds because they are working with Gita. Sure. But I guess if the author would yield, if he has further understanding of that.
I do yield. And like I said, in formulation with bond counsel, this was the language that they provided. And the explanation that they gave was, yes, while the contractor will be the one to assume bonds, they will go to the market. And that's why they wanted the language to be permissible, because they didn't know what would be required prior to, in terms of how the project and how the RFP, when it was responded to, how it would basically bear out in the final analysis of implementation. Because the program, as discussed here, is multiple facilities. And so, in order to say that you're prioritizing the hospital, it would be the bond issuances for the hospital. And so, that, or whatever requirements would be if something was required prior to. But yeah, that's what bond counsel had said the language needs to be. Does this suffice? Madam Speaker? Any further questions?
Well, on the amendment, I don't know how much these bonds, the bonds from the explanations we received this morning are going to come into play when the contractor is established. So when that contractor comes in, which, if it's pursuant to an RFP after the charrette is done, it's not going to be for several years. And then the contractor, we're going to ask them, by this amendment, to use their bonds to prioritize those towards the hospital facility. I don't have an objection to that. I'm just trying to figure it out. The hospital facility, you know, as the CEO Pasada said to us, is the one that requires the expertise that is not available here. Supposedly, that is the reason why the governor's pursuing $3 million to get the Army Corps and a charrette for that expertise of the hospital. And I don't have any objection. I'm hoping that this language doesn't, it doesn't seem to preclude the use of the proceeds for anything else, but it just says it shall use its best efforts to prioritize a hospital. But it looks to me like the hospital is the most complex portion of it all. But I actually like it, because that way, I don't know, I guess it prevents them from using it for any of those preliminary projects, too, instead just to go straight to the hospital. So I just want to make sure that that's the intent, and that we're not going to be precluding them from going forward with something simple, like, you know, if the public health building is much more simple, could be completed, you know what I mean? Anyways, but it doesn't look like it precludes, so.
All right. So you don't have an objection to the amendment, then? Correct? All right. Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just maybe a question for the author of the amendment. What are some cases where the prioritization of the hospital is not deemed practical?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And much like the retiring speaker that had the original question, the idea was, when I spoke to Gita, when I spoke to bond counsel, the idea was, yes, the hospital is the most complex. However, there is a realization that that is the priority as well. But for some reason, if not practicable, that's why, in my introduction, it was discussed that it would not preclude. This, you know, for lack of another statement, Mr. Chairman, this is more of a statement than it is than a shall. It's a shall where practicable. I think that this body continues to believe, notwithstanding the fact that the hospital is the most complex, it is the most in need. And the issue of the Guam behavioral, that is the newest building in the inventory of the government of Guam, Mr. Chairman. As far as public health is concerned, from what I understand, they are either the only or the main tenant right now in the old Guam legislature, which the government of Guam purchased that building. The balance of their staff are over at Sentam under a lease agreement as well. And so, when you look at their arrangement, while not ideal, it certainly is adequate at this time. And so, the idea here is, is that it's more of a statement than it is anything else, but I think it's a statement that's valuable, and it's a statement that many senators had expressed that this would be a priority. If that answers the question, it's not precluding the fact that if for some reason, another project jumped to the top, or for some reason, they actually, the infrastructure requirements are so voluminous in the tens of millions of dollars where there's not cash available, that they would go to market and make sure that infrastructure could be put in prior to breaking down for the hospital. So that, and that's why the language is flexible, if that answers the question, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Senator Duñez. Senator Perez, does that suffice?
I appreciate the response. I'm also just thinking about the other information regarding the previous construction that was using the very same model of a contractor-developer. And in that one, they were supposed to build actually five different schools, but they reduced it down to four because there was a delay in the project. So I appreciate the idea of prioritizing the hospital, but I'm wondering if it could be stronger, considering that our experience from the past development. We did miss out on another project because of the cost overruns. And so, I don't want to see this recur with this very important project. We really want to prioritize the hospital.
All right. Do you have an objection to this amendment? If not, then we'll move on. Do you have an objection?
I'm just trying to think of a way to strengthen it, is all.
Beg your pardon?
I'm trying to think of a way to strengthen it.
Okay. So do you have an objection to the amendment? None? And I know you want to make it stronger, but I just need to hear yes or no, so we can move on to anyone else, our colleagues that like to speak to it.
I know the author said that it's more of a policy statement, so I'm not an ejection to that.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of our other colleagues would like to speak to this amendment? There being none, Senator Duñez, could you close? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the input from my colleagues. And I did, I did, we did want to put some stronger language in here. The issue was that the size and scope of the proposed facility overall, as well as perhaps infrastructure requirements, we didn't want to kind of gum up the works, if you will, to the extent that it made it impracticable. But I think, I think it is a strong enough statement that this legislature really wants that hospital to be built first. So I thank my colleagues for their input, and thank you once again for co-sponsoring the amendment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Duñez. Are there any objections? Because I did not see here any objections. Are there any objections by my colleagues? There being none, motion passed, amendment is accepted. We will now proceed to Senator Perez. You have five amendments. We will begin with, which one would you like to begin with? Because you have five, and you'll be.
Can I start with the tropical code, energy code?
Which one?
Line 1, page 12.
Line 1, page 12. That would be.
SFP L1 P12.
All right. All right. This has to do with the tropical energy code. Oh, outstanding. Please proceed and explain your amendment, please.
Please proceed and explain your amendment, please.
All right, this amendment belongs to Section 83107 of the bill, which pertains to contractual safeguards, and it lists a bunch of requirements that are expectations from the contract. And this one, this amendment would add the 2019 Guam Tropical Energy Code, which was passed into law. And so this is very important, because we're talking about the cost of this project, or the cost, the payment that we're going to make to this contractor-developer would include not only the base rent, but also additional rent, that is based on utilities, insurance, maintenance cost. We know the cost of utilities are going to go up. We already hear, we already see GPAs increasing their LEAC, you know, in the next, they've increased it this past year. I think they're going to increase, go another round of increasing it. And so in looking at the cost of utilities from three different agencies, so I have currently Guam Behavioral Health spends about $600,000 annually, Department of Public Health, $455,000, GMH is almost $1.9 million. So the total for power alone is 2.9 million, just for this fiscal year. And so this particular project, the objective is to expand capacity of the hospital, Guam Behavioral Health, Department of Public Health. So what this would mean is that the cost of utilities will increase with the increase in capacity, with the increase of rates. And this is just power. I haven't talked about water or other utilities. And so I think what G-Tech provides, so it is, has passed by the 35th Guam Legislature, and the beauty about this is that when we conserve energy in our buildings, we can conserve, according to a study that was done locally, they were able to reduce the power by 50%. And so if we want to think about the long-term investment, which we are doing right now, I think it's very relevant to think about how we can reduce the long-term cost and protect the environment. And I think incorporating this particular requirement in the build will be very fruitful. And the payback is, it's going to pay back for us in regards to savings. And yeah, so it's a win-win situation for, you know, financially speaking, environmentally speaking, and it's just a better investment all around. So I would like to proffer this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez, my colleagues. On the amendment proffered by Senator Perez, Energy Saving Code, does anyone like to speak to that? Are there any objections to that amendment? There being none, do you need to close, Senator Perez? If not, we're going to go ahead and we're going to pass it. There's no objection. You want to, you need to close?
I just want to give some more information. So the current IT bill that's being passed by the Congress, they have money for these types of investments. So there could be other grants that can help pay for this.
Understood. There's no objection to your amendment? Motion passes. Your next amendment, Senator Perez. Which one are we going to go to next?
Okay.
You have four left. So which one did you want to go to?
Let me, give me a moment, I need to.
Which one?
One second, please. Yeah, okay, so the other amendment that I have is on page 10, line 11 through 13.
All right, please proceed, Senator Perez.
Okay, so I just wanted to provide just more clarification on the language. I think the meaning is the same, it remains the same.
Okay. Just removing the word "one," otherwise it's open to if they have more than one, correct?
Yeah, so I know the idea is that we're going to award one RFP, but just to kind of make it a little bit more clear, what I did is shall solicit requests for proposals for a contractor-developer in compliance with the Guam procurement law for the design, build, finance, lease, transfer, and maintenance. Yeah, so to me, that, the wording works, you know, I think if we kept the language, it almost seems like we're just going to solicit one, we're only going to select one or accept one bid versus, yeah, so I think the wording works better. It's just about wording, but it's the same, it has the same effect as the original language.
All right. Does any of my colleagues like to speak to that? Madam Speaker?
This is actually the question that I thought, it's the big question, yeah. Are they trying to do this with one RFP? That's what it sounded like to us this morning. That's why I thought it's going to be a giant contract for every item in it, right? Even IT, everything. But I guess if the author would yield, did you receive any information that they're going to do more than one? Because it's been represented, I thought, to us that it's going to be one. That's why this is in the bill.
I have no objection to it. Unless you have an objection to it, otherwise this is actually quite reasonable of amendment.
No, I mean, if the sponsor would yield, sponsor of the amendment would yield about the information this is based on.
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question as they revealed?
Sure, absolutely. So I'm just thinking of the procurement process. When we solicit, send out solicitations, we expect more than one bid package to come in. And the wording is kind of set up that way, that we're going to solicit requests for proposals from different vendors, but it's going to ultimately end up, we're going to pick just one.
I get, I get.
Contractor.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you for yielding, yeah. I'm reading it in the reverse, that they are going to solicit one time, and they will receive several responses, yes. So if you're meaning several responses, okay, I agree. However, I was, I'm asking about the solicitation, how often are they going to do that? My understanding was one giant one. But okay, I have no objection, thank you.
All right, does anyone else have an objection? Anybody else would like to speak, any of my colleagues would like to speak to this amendment? Are there any objections to this amendment? Do you need to close on this, Senator Perez? If not, we'll, motion passes. Senator Perez, your next amendment. Which one are you going to, which one do you want to speak about? You have three left.
Okay, this one pertains to expediting permitting process.
What page and line are you talking about?
It's page 16, line 26.
Okay. Page 16, line 26, okay.
Yeah, so this amendment would basically delete this section about expediting permitting process, which states in the bill, "Since time is of the essence relative to the development of the new facility, notwithstanding any other provision of law, Imaga, Haagen, Guaha shall have the authority to take any and all steps necessary to expedite the issuance of any and all permits required for the development, design, and construction of the new facility." So, you know, I understand that, you know, any kind of delays would, you know, basically we want to expedite this process. I understand that completely. But I think to remove something that would safeguard, you know, the reasons for those permits are, you know, is essential, to make sure that projects are following codes and laws. I think there's a reason for that, and I think that should still be retained. There are other ways to expedite a permit process, and, you know, my fear is that if we keep this in the bill, then we might circumvent a very important step. You know, who knows what it might be? Is it fire codes? Is it historic sites? Is it about clean water? You know, I would rather much follow those regulations to ensure that this investment is on solid ground. And considering, you know, we have to think about the long term, it's, you know, a 40-year project, I think sometimes when we move quickly, we might compromise something in the long term, which might end up costing more money. And I think, you know, there are ways to expedite it without having to circumvent any kind of regulations, which this, which this language, if it's kept, could potentially do that, because it's a notwithstanding, right? Notwithstanding any provision, can take any and all steps.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Any of my colleagues like to speak to this? There, Madam Speaker?
Yes, I'm very much in support of this amendment, because the permitting process is exclusively controlled by the executive branch or the federal government. And for those, I don't think this provision would affect the federal government, but it would definitely, you know, I agree with the sponsor that we do not want to be, if we are going to by-step any process, it should be, or I'm sorry, expedite any process, I believe the governor has within her authority, just from being, you know, the chief of the executive branch, that she can set their priorities, right? And so that she controls those agencies who are doing the permitting, and they, it's just a matter of prioritization, hopefully not a matter of bypassing any type of law. So that's why I support this, because it takes out that authority to, you know, notwithstanding any other law. And I think it would, they would still have the same ability to expedite. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Telo, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I too stand in full support of this. I mean, the possibilities of us getting grants are very, you know, hopeful at this point, and we don't want to jeopardize that in any way, Mr. Chair. I think that even in some cases, contracts that are awarded under the federal or military require lead certification. So there are certain things in there that they put in perspective, and I think the one amendment that was proffered earlier regarding tropical efficient, well, light efficiency or power efficiency is one such thing as well. I think that if we leave this in there, and when we're, and I'm pretty sure that when the, going after grants, they're going to want a copy of this particular legislation, they'll see that this is taken out, I mean, are placed in, it might jeopardize the possibility of grants. So I stand in full support of this, and like earlier said, the administration has the power to, you know, have everyone stop and work on one project, but not oversee. Yep, thank you.
Does anyone else, any of my other colleagues would like to speak to this amendment? If not, are there any objections? I haven't heard anyone. Senator Perez, do you need to, do you need to close on this? If not, amendment passes. Your next amendment, Senator Perez?
Okay, this is on page 10, line 9.
10, line 9, okay. Please proceed.
Okay, it states, "Upon receipt of the program study, the Guam Economic Development Authority is in consultation with the administrator or director of the respective healthcare agency shall solicit requests for proposal in compliance with the Guam procurement law for the design, build, finance." Okay, so I just want to make sure that legal makes technical corrections based on the passage of the previous amendment, so this was written prior to that. So continuing on, "Transfer and maintenance of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence according to the needs of all healthcare agencies and consistent with this chapter prior to the solicitation, a breakdown of the cost due from Guam Memorial Hospital, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center must be determined." So, yeah, the reason I proffer this amendment is just to get a clearer picture of how we are dividing up this amount that we are going to fund. Yeah, I think this information, I think we need, definitely need more information about what, how we're spending this huge amount of money. And considering that the hospital is our priority, I think this information is important to have.
All right, thank you, Senator Perez. Does anyone like to speak to this amendment? Looking across the table, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask if the author would yield, just to get a clarification. I have no objection, of course, in ensuring that this process follows the proper procurement, but I just wanted to clarify, because certainly I'm of the position that we need to prioritize the hospital, because right now, that in and of itself is a major financial undertaking. But the way we have it laid out, it would also include getting the amounts for public health and also for Guam Behavioral Health. Would you interpret that as, I mean, obviously, the administration's made their position publicly known that they want to consolidate and build this facility or this compound that has these buildings constructed, you know, jointly or concurrently next to each other. How do you interpret that with regards to your amendment? Do you think that would sort of endorse that idea?
Senator Perez, do you yield to that question?
Can it be rephrased? Can you rephrase the question?
I'm sorry?
So can you repeat the question?
Rephrase.
Well, as I'd mentioned, I mean, the administration has kind of, they pretty much relayed that they want to be able to, you know, build this compound, to have all these key facilities adjacent in a single compound to each other. Do you look at your interpretation of how you have it here by including all three of these facilities, the hospital, public health, and the Guam Behavioral Health? Because I certainly would like to see the hospital prioritize that in and of itself as quite a significant financial undertaking. I'd like to see that built before anything else.
Okay, so I'm open to an amendment, but I, yeah, I think the idea is if we're going to spend that amount of money, how is that going to be? Yeah, I would like to know what the cost is for each component. But if there is amendment that, I'm open to an amendment to this. But I think we did pass a previous amendment where we are prioritizing it, so that might potentially address that concern.
No, and I understand, certainly, I think we all want to know the cost of, you know, Senator Telo just relayed, she has an amendment hopefully that will address that. But thank you, I appreciate the sponsors' comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to inquire. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. That's not an objection, I just wanted to get a clearance, clarity, okay. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Are there any objections to this amendment? There is one objection?
No, 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 question.
You wanted to speak?
Yes.
Oh, okay, there you go, Senator Blas, come on, bring it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, appreciate the, I guess, from the author of the amendment, recognition that there was a previous amendment that has been passed by this body. The question is then, with the passage of that previous amendment, is this amendment necessary, in her opinion?
I yield to the question.
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question, Senator Blas?
Yeah, I think it's still, you know, it's still important. You know, we want to have a definitive amount of what we're going to spend, how much we're going to spend on which project. Yeah, it's, I think it adds value, it doesn't necessarily, it's not overlapping completely in my mind. I mean, I think if you were to go out and buy something, right? If you, like, if you're thinking about purchasing something, you want to know what your money's going to go towards, and I think that's just the general gist of this.
Senator Blas, does that suffice?
Good to have. Not really, because I'm just wondering here, it says, "A breakdown of the cost due from the Guam Memorial Hospital and Department of Public Health and Social must be determined." What cost due? What is this due cost that we're talking about here? What is this due cost that we're talking about here?
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question or statement made by Senator Blas?
Sorry, can he repeat the question again?
The question is, the question is midway through your amendment here says, "Prior to the solicitation, a breakdown of the cost due from Guam Memorial Hospital." Okay, what is the, what is the cost due? What are you talking about here?
Okay, so, yeah, I'm open to changing any language. The idea is that I want to get a breakdown cost of, from each of these agencies. So what is it going to cost the taxpayers for this healthcare facility from each of these agencies? So I'm open to changing any language here in this particular amendment. Maybe cost, just take that out, is that what you suggest? And just say, "Cost from"? Maybe, can we get a quick recess? Yes.
Committee of House, call back to order, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, after speaking with my colleagues, I'll just withdraw this amendment. There's another amendment coming up, I think that's better.
All right, you're withdrawing that amendment? Are there any objections to withdraw the amendment? There being none, amendment is drawn. Senator Perez, you have one more. Please proceed. The last one is on page 14, line 10.
Okay, this, you know, I won't, I won't proffer this amendment, but I need to make a motion to reconsider a previous amendment that I proffered.
You, are you going to proceed with your amendment? This amendment you have or not?
No, I won't, I won't proceed with this amendment.
I didn't understand what you said, ma'am.
I'm not going to proceed with this fifth amendment. I won't proceed with this amendment.
You won't or will?
Yeah, I will not. I will not.
You will not? Okay, thank you.
But in any case, I do want to reconsider the actions of the body regarding a previous amendment. I was just approached by legal.
Okay, so we'll just set this aside and we'll just move along with the others?
Sure, yes, set it aside.
All right, thank you.
But I do want to reconsider one of the amendments that was just passed.
You want to reconsider one that just passed? You're asking to reconsider which amendment, ma'am?
The 2019 Guam Tropical Energy Code. It should be 2017, the public law states 2017.
Which amendment, what? Okay, line 1, page 12, the Tropical Energy Code. My colleagues, there's a motion, my colleagues, to reconsider the action of the body. It's in reference to line 1, page 12, to add a new subsection to the bill to read M. 2019 Guam Tropical Energy Code. There's a motion to reconsider the action of the body. It was passed. Are there any objections to reconsider? There being none. Okay, Senator Perez, now what, are you going to introduce an amendment to it or are you just going to withdraw it?
I would like to, yeah, amend it. It's a really simple amendment. It should be 2017, not 2019.
Then, you have to withdraw the amendment, then we'll start, and then when you finally send it through, we entertain it as we go along, okay? Committee of House, call back to order, and I believe, Senator Perez, you wanted to make an amendment to change the year of the 2019 to 2017, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. I was, yeah, alerted that that was the public law, it does include 2017.
Okay. Are there, I don't think anyone would like to speak to it. Are there any objection to that amendment, change it to 2019 to 2017? There being none, there's no objection. Motion passed, the amendment is passed, okay?
Sujus massi.
Thank you. Now we will move to Senator Telo, your amendment, ma'am.
Sujus massi, Mr. Chair, and I'll try to make this as quick as I can. It's on line 4, page 17, and it's to add a new section to, to the bill and to renumber the following sections accordingly. Mr. Chair, this is one of the reasons why good senator, the previous senator withdrew her amendment on this one and the concerns that were asked by my colleague from Baragada. Basically, what this amendment will do, Mr. Chair, and if I can read it for you, is section two, "Financial Plan Required. GIDEA shall prepare a financial plan within 45 days of the enactment of this act. At a minimum, the financial plan shall include a comprehensive report of the associated costs and sources of revenues required for the duration of the Guam Twenty-First Century Healthcare Project. The financial plan shall reflect the total project cost and any phases that represent the project development priorities. All anticipated project revenues shall be matched and allocable to the anticipated project costing and shall," I think this is a wrong thing. Okay, no, this is correct. This is the right amendment, sorry. "And all anticipated project revenues shall be matched and allocable to the anticipated project costs costing and shall detail its impact on the overall debt ceiling." Something's awry here on this particular sentence, but, you know, I'll ask legal to review this. Section B, Mr. Chair, it says, "The financial plan shall be submitted to Imaga Hagen Guahan and transmitted to the Speaker of Lahelesla Turan Guahan. No RFP or bids authorized to effectuate the requirement of this act may be issued until the delivery to the Speaker of Ilasla Turan Guahan." So basically, Mr. Chair, the amendment requires GIDEA to provide the governor a financial plan outlining the overall vision as explained that will enable the proposed medical campus to materialize. Among the exceptions is for GIDEA to detail all the costs that are associated with the proposed project and to detail exactly how these costs will be paid for, with all things considered, such as the anticipated federal EITC reimbursement and government of Guam's physical health post-COVID. It's important. The financial plan will explain, if applicable, a phased-in approach as well, and will ensure that any funds that are authorized for the project is distributed accordingly to the plan, as in the case for, like, home mortgages. GIDEA, like I said, has 45 days, calendar days, to submit the plan to the governor, and the plan must be also forwarded to the legislature for review. Usually in cases like this, Mr. Chair, it says for approval, but I didn't incorporate approval. It's just to notify, to be transparent, and to give us a copy of their plan, that's all. It goes to the governor first, and then it'll go to us, within the same time period, of course.
Oh, within 45 days?
Within 45 calendar days, they'll provide that, the plan, and it'll be submitted to the governor's office, of course, the governor, for review. And a plan will also be awarded to, or forwarded to the legislature at the same time, so we can see what the process is and what's moving forward with this project. It's requiring a financial plan. It's imperative to ensure that, you know, Gov. Guam averts a physical catastrophic scenario in the future, so should the, it's important that we are abreast of this. I mean, we, we really don't know with pandemic, you know, we've been through a second wave that's almost as, as bad as the first that's happening, and this will affect everything and everybody's home and family. So it's important to stay on top of it, and that's the, the reason, Mr. Chair, this amendment is put through is just to keep us abreast of the process, the plan, and how to move forward. Because there are two options, leaseback as well as loan, so they can actually combine these two perspectives.
All right, does anyone like to speak, Senator Nelson, to the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a question on item B, where it says, "The financial plan shall be submitted to Imaga Hagen Guahan and transmitted to the Speaker of Ilisatoran Guahan." The question I have is the following sentence, which reads, "No RFP or bids authorized to effectuate this requirement of this act may be issued until the delivery to the Speaker of Ilisatoran Guahan." So that is, you have in the beginning of the sentence double underline, and then in the middle of the sentence, it's a bold underline, but anyways, so I'm thinking that, so they cannot approve the project until the actual RFP or bid is sent to the speaker? Is that part of the procurement process?
All right. Senator Telo, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I do. Thank you for that question. Basically, what it says is just the report, you know, how they're going to move forward on the financing of this project and associate with all the, that's, comes along with it, you know, the cost, how they're going to finance it, and it's just a matter of submitting this financial plan to the governor's office as well as the legislature. And if they, they don't do that, then they can't issue out an RFP or bid. It's, it's, I maybe, "No RFP or bids authorized to effectuate the requirements of this may be issued until delivery to Speaker of Ilasla Turan Guahan." Maybe I should even put the governor of Guam as well, but I'm pretty sure that that's, they're going to submit, she's going to have the plan herself, right? And then submit it to us. But I think it's important, the reason too, is that by the time we usually get notice from the administration on any project, it's kind of late in the ballgame, the ball is rolling. This way, at least we can see what's going on firsthand.
Understood.
So that's, that's what it means. It doesn't stop the project from moving forward, it just requires a plan to be submitted to us for review.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Nelson, does that suffice? It's good to know.
I understand that it would be required for the financial plan to be submitted to the Speaker of Ilisatoran Guahan. I, I don't see an issue with that. However, in the second sentence where it says, "No RFP or bids authorized to effectuate the requirements of this act may be issued until the delivery of, to the Speaker of Ilisatoran Guahan," that, that sentence is kind of, you know, it's open for interpretation, it's not very clear. So I can read it as two things. I can read it as, you can't move forward with the bid until we approve the, until the speaker gets the financial plan, one. Or two, the, another way to read it is, is if you get the bid, you have to send it to the speaker before it's applied, if, before you authorize the bid. So that's the only thing, I think, that is really open to, to arguments, to debate. So maybe we can fix that second sentence, but I wouldn't know how to word it.
Okay, so maybe you want to take a quick recess and you guys can meet with legal and come up with some good verbiage?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Prenz, before we go to recess, sir, do you have something you want to say to that?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment I think could clarify. It's just two words, sorry, three words. So after the word, "delivery," add the three words, "of the financial plan," sorry, that's four words, "of the financial plan," and then that's it.
Okay, we'll take the recess so that the minds can come together and we can come up with one line, okay? Thank you. Committee of the House called back to order. Senator Tello, I will address you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the time with legal. And, and my other colleagues provided some good information. So I'm going to withdraw this amendment, Mr. Chair, and legal is going to, is preparing another amendment to make it cleaner. So I'm, I'll reserve my time for later. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion to withdraw. Are there any objection? There being none, motion is carried. That, that amendment is withdrawn. And we are now at, Madam Speaker, you have, I have in my hand, four. Hope you know more?
That's correct.
Four so far?
Four.
All right. Which one would you like to start with first? So we can, oh, wait a minute. You got five.
I'll take line 15, page 15, for five. No.
Line 15, page 15, ma'am. Please proceed.
All right. Line 15, page 15, is to amend section 83111 subsection A by changing the word "shall" to "may." And this is where that GIDEA may include in the specifications for the new facilities, the requirement for a medical information management system, electronic medical record system, and building management system. As we discussed this morning, I just think if they go through the charette, and they find that these things can be procured much more inexpensively through, you know, individual RFPs or something separate from this leaseback, that they don't have to be included in the leaseback. And I know that we should include this in the new facility. So I'm not saying they should not be included in the new facility, but if, I'm hoping they're going to find a more affordable way to procure these things. Like, they're procured an electronic medical record system right now, a new one, for the hospital right now. And, and we're not, you know, paying interest on that. We're, yeah. So it's, I'm hoping we can preclude some of the interest that is going to be paid through this leaseback. The leaseback has a very, you know, solid interest that we're paying, and I don't want to pay it for these things if we don't have to. So I put the word "may," Mr. Chair. That's the amendment.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are there any objection? Or does anyone who'd like to speak on the changing the word "shall" to "may?" Allow the flexibility. There being no, is there any objection to this amendment? There being none? Amendment passes. Madam Speaker, your next amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. The next amendment is on page 26, no, sorry, line 26, page 12. So it's section 83109A subsection 4, line 26, page 12.
I stand by, Madam Speaker. I'm looking for my copy. Let's take a quick recess to make sure everybody's able to see it. All right? Committee of the House called back to order. Madam Speaker, we do now have your, your amendment, line 26, page 12. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is to section 83109 subsection A4. So this section talks about pledging $35 million every year for the rental payments under the leaseback. And then it says, on subsection 3, government, governor may use federal funds. And on subsection 4, it talks about other financing options, including bonds. So I'm adding, my amendment is just to add, at the end of subsection 4, the word "subject to legislative approval," because I don't want to, by this bill, be approving any bond issuance that doesn't go through the legislature scrutiny especially, and, or loans, so loans or bonds especially. And so that's why I'm adding those words, instead of deleting the entire subsection.
All right. Would anyone like to speak? Are there any, Senator Clinton?
Sorry, what, what's the line and page again?
That'll be line 26, page 12. It's adding on, on number four, "subject to legislative approval." They go outside their, what the bill is intended, then they have to come back to us. Am I correct, Madam Speaker? Yeah. All right. Are there any objection to that? I see no objection. Amendment passes. Madam Speaker, you have quite a few more.
I think there's three more. They're all in the same section, Mr. Chair, but different pages. Okay. So the first one would be line 25, page 8. It's section 83104 of the bill. Line 25, page 8.
All right. Madam Speaker?
All right. So the amendment would be to delete, this is talking about GIDEA's authority in this project, and the, for the healthcare center. But I'm removing the line that says, "There is hereby appropriated to GIDEA an amount not to exceed more than 5% of the total cost of the contract for the project supervision, which includes covering the cost of a hospital development consultant or consultants, which will be provided by the program office under 83104C," and the rest of that paragraph. And the reason I'm proposing to remove this, as we talked about earlier, if we went with the contract amount, 5% to GIDEA is $60 million. And right now, we, we know that GIDEA is already utilizing the consultants' matrix, that they procured without involving the legislature. They were able to obtain that consultancy. We know that the governor is requesting $3 million to allocate towards the Army Corps for its consulting services. And so I think, at this point, let's see how far we get with those two consultants. Let's, and when the Army Corps is done with its work and lays out what Let's, and when the Army Corps is done with its work and lays out what will be needed going forward, including, you know, what type of project manager, or whether it is going to be the project manager, as it suggested, then, you know, then we can talk about how to pay GIDEA. And the other reason is, yeah, because the $60 million, according to the bill, does not necessarily come out of the $35 million, obviously, right? So, it would be something that it's, we may have to, it says we are appropriating. And I just don't think we can do that, based on our FY '22 budget. And there are just too many questions surrounding this. So, I think this is not necessary as part of passage of this bill today. It's something that if they really do need fees at GIDEA, on top of the fees we're paying Army Corps, on top of the fees we're paying Matrix, and on top of the fees we're paying the design, build, you know, leaseback person, then we will, we can reexamine this at that time, Mr. Chair.
All right, Madam Speaker, I'm just, just real simple, you mentioned $60 million, I've only heard $30 million, because 5% of 600 was $30 million?
Thirty?
I think that was what was mentioned.
I'm sorry, yeah, $30 million.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was correct.
You're correct.
All right. And anyone would like to speak to that? I saw the hand of Senator Shelton.
Line 25, page 8.
A short recess, we just want to verify the page and line number, all right? Committee of the whole has called back to order. Colleagues, just to make some corrections, it's on page 9, line 2 to line 9. And we'll proceed to now Senator Shelton. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm concerned about this amendment. Ask question to the author, if this perhaps may jeopardize our use of the Army Corps of Engineers as our consultant, or as our program management office. Also, we know that in previous projects administered by GIDEA, there is this, we spoke about it in the Committee of the Whole yesterday, that there is usually this fee that we allow for in legislation, to allow GIDEA to do the work it needs to do. And so, I don't want to strike this from the bill, and not give GIDEA the resources necessary to proceed, and to allow us to pay, whether it's the Army Corps of Engineers or some other entity, to help us get this project off the ground.
All right, so I hear that is an objection, at this point. Does anyone else like to speak to the Senator Tello, and then Senator Clinton will follow? Senator Tello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, based on the information that was provided by the author of this amendment, you know, with respect to the, all the other areas in which we will have assistance in moving forward on creating this plan, you know, this hospital, everything from the Army Corps of Engineers being a part of it, which they bring to light, people who have the experience in building hospitals, that's one of the things they mentioned during that Army Corps of Engineer meeting we had, to utilize people who've built hospitals, not just anyone, any contractor. So, that is a $3 million marker right there, right? But, Mr. Chair, you know, my concern too, was $30 million. To me, the language here, it says "hospital project supervision, reuse study, and appropriation." My concern is that, does this mean that we are having to appropriate from the general fund that amount of money, that $30 million from the general fund? If GIDEA does projects, you know, they go out to the bond market, and if they are, what's the word, borrowing on the market, let's say, you know, $600 million, then 5% of that is $30 million. So, technically, we're going to get, it's like closing costs, Mr. Chair, in a home mortgage. You got to pay for the closing cost, you got to come up with that. So, it's the same scenario. Are we going to end up getting, you know, $540 million, and that's, that 60, or, you know, sorry, do the math, that's 60 million, but 30 million, sorry, $570 million, and then the 30 million is going to GIDEA? Or, do we get the 600 million, and then through the general fund, we have to appropriate 30 million to cover the cost?
I think, Senator Tello, the cost here is within the bill. It's not like you're going to draw somewhere else. It's all within the bill. And I may be wrong, but unless the author would like to clarify that, where the money's coming from. It's not coming from, like you're drawing from somewhere else, it's just from the same bill.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair?
It's a total cost. If it's 600 million, then it's a total cost. So, you don't get to see it until...
So, then it would be a little bit more than 600 million, because we would also have to borrow, or, you know, with the other 30 million that comes with the 5%. As long as, Mr. Chair, you can assure us that this appropriation is not going to come from the general fund, that the money is all within this bill, other than the 1 million, Mr. Chair, because the 1 million for the study actually says it comes from the general fund. So, subtract that, and then you have the 5% for GIDEA, because, Mr. Chair, if we get in a situation where we have to appropriate out of the general fund...
Understood.
So, if you can clarify that, you know?
Senator, Senator Shelton, in reference to your objection, the question is, let's take a quick recess, so I can even call GIDEA and ask them, where's the 30 million coming from? I think that's what you need to know. Where's the 30 million coming from? Because my understanding throughout our session here was that, it's part of the pot of gold. In other words, if you're going to borrow 600, and you're successful, you get 5% of the 600, to do your job and everything else.
Yes, but, Mr. Chair...
Madam Speaker, maybe you can answer that?
Yes, I would like to yield to that question.
Please.
Because normally, when we vet a bond, in there, it says "the proceeds shall be used for," and that's where GIDEA gets paid, out of the proceeds, we know exactly how much, and never do they get paid 30 million, that's for sure, no matter what bond that we have passed. But the thing is, this language in the bill says, "There is hereby appropriated to GIDEA an amount, 5% of the cost." It doesn't say it comes out of, and it doesn't come out of the $35 million, clearly, because the $35 million language says, "It shall only be used for rental payments." Yeah, so that's why, that's why, that's the reason why I want to delete this. If GIDEA creates a contract with the rental that allows them something else, you know, maybe they can do that. But for now, these costs are not necessary. In fact, GIDEA wasn't even aware of them, when we were talking about it earlier, they said they had not thought about what they might need. So, if they need something else to include in the RFP, that's different. But this, this language here is saying, it's appropriated to them now. And so, that's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
All right.
Impacting our general fund.
I think, Senator Clinton, you would like to respond to the question that's...
Just a point of information, Mr. Chair.
All right, then, appreciate it.
My understanding is that the 5%, yes, it's appropriated to GIDEA, but it's specifically for the program management. So, it's not for GIDEA, it's for the cost of the program management. It's so that GIDEA can then, it says here, "an amount not to exceed more than 5% of the total cost of the contract for the project supervision, which includes covering the cost of a hospital development consultant or consultants, which will be provided by the program management office under Section 83104(c)."
I hope that kind of answers the questions, what they're going to use it for.
No, it still says, it says appropriated, Mr. Chair, and we still don't know where that pot of money is coming. I understand what the, you know, the point of information provided us, but it still doesn't tell us. And if, Mr. Chair, if you do, please, I'd appreciate it to call GIDEA to find out where that money is coming from, then it will be more relaxed about finding it.
I don't think GIDEA is going to tell us, this is our bill. This, we wrote this bill, the legislature, and the legislature's saying it's coming, it's going to be appropriated. So, that's where, we have to fix this language here now.
I'm going to contact GIDEA, and we'll just find out, reconfirm. I know it's our bill, everything's our bill, even when we do refinancing of any autonomous agency, all right? Take a short recess. Committee of the whole has called back to order. Senator Amanda Shelton, if you could please, I was able to contact GIDEA, and they explained it to you, and you can explain it, other than the chair explaining it.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you to the folks at GIDEA for the information. And so, this amendment that discusses an amount that GIDEA, not to exceed 5% of the total cost, this is not an upfront fee that we're talking about, all at once going to see happening. Instead, this is a management fee that we'll see over time, and it helps GIDEA to be able to ensure that the developer is doing their job, it ensures that the insurance people are doing their jobs, and it allows GIDEA to monitor this project on behalf of Gov. Guam. GIDEA, through this fee, 5% fee, is not looking to make a profit, they are covering the cost of business to protect the government of Guam, and the investment of the people of Guam through this project. So, this is allowing us to compensate GIDEA for that work. It also further protects the investors in this project, the developers in this project, because they know that GIDEA has the interests of the government of Guam, and the people of Guam, at the forefront, to ensure success of this project.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Madam Speaker, I hope that, or, Senator Tello?
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair, yeah, that's good and well. I mean, you just explained what GIDEA's roles are, but you didn't explain where the money is coming from, and that we talked about, Mr. Chair, during the break, you know, that's what we're looking for.
All right. Senator Shelton, did she explain to you where the money, how the money is derived?
It is not an upfront fee, so we wouldn't be paying that $30 million all at once, but it would be a fee that we see over time, similar to the project that we have, the JFK High School. There is a maintenance fee, an insurance fee, all of these things, and we're able to assess that 5% on this, to allow GIDEA to do this work. I mean, in the case of JFK, it's not GIDEA, it's not GIDEA doing the work, but we know that this provision of the bill that we're trying to strike out allows GIDEA to monitor all of this. all of this and be the government entity to oversee the project.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, that...
Point of information.
Yeah, the amendment does not remove GIDEA's supervision. That stays in. All it removes is the words, "There is hereby appropriated to GIDEA," which is, we're removing it, because that's not even what GIDEA expects. GIDEA expects, they might put that in their leaseback arrangement and get some payment back on the lease, or get some payment during the leaseback. And they're looking for us to appropriate that. Our $35 million a year may go to that. That's why I'm saying, it's not necessary here. This language here is just going to cause confusion, and it might create some kind of, you know, cash influx that's not even intended by anyone, not even anyone in here. And so, they will create the RFP, which will dictate whether they're receiving management fees on the leaseback or not. That's not what this provision's doing. So, I'm leaving in, they are the supervisors, yes. Everything else, they're going to have to determine when they create their RFP, if they're saying it's going to be this long-term under the leaseback. But that's not what this provision does, that's why I'm deleting, I'm asking that we delete that, Mr. Chair. Otherwise, it is an appropriation.
Okay. Senator Tello, because we, actually, we left with you.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, if I can just offer a point of information to the prior comments.
Yes, please.
So, my understanding, what's being represented to us, is that GIDEA is expecting this 5%, not that they're not expecting it, that they fully need this 5% in order to go forward with the project.
All right. Back to Senator Tello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's like 5% of what? 5% of the $600 million that this bill is going to authorize? Or 5% of what? The management cost that GIDEA is...
5% of, sorry, right here, it says of the total cost of the contract.
Right, right, which is a total amount of contract, which is, what my point is, it is $30 million, Mr. Chair. That's an awful lot of funding right now for an agency that appropriates into this bill. Our intention here is to allow a bill to go through that allows $600 million for this campus, this healthcare campus. That's it. But if you look at this, actually, it's $601 million, Mr. Chair, because we do appropriate $1 million for the study in this legislation. But doing it more than that, Mr. Chair, is disingenuous here. It's not right. We have to, let's say then, we're actually, this bill is actually going to give out $631 million, if that's the case. Mr. Chair, I think that what GIDEA has plans on doing, especially when they put their financial plans together and incorporate whatever costs that they have to incorporate it, it can go into the leaseback agreement. I think that's fair enough, and it gives them enough time to assess and evaluate how much funding they really need for this project. So, by admitting this out, this section out, it gives us the option to hear them out when they come back with their plan, that's all. I mean, Mr. Chair, I'm pretty sure that this legislation is, as far as making any kind of changes in the future, it's going to happen, especially if we have to address, right? So, the opportunity right now is for us to just make it clean cut at the very beginning, eliminate this section, and when they come back to the legislature asking for a request or incorporating it in the leaseback, that's when we can do it. But right now, putting us in a predicament that appropriates $30 million from the general fund is almost reckless, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Clinton, do you have any questions on the amendment?
Yes, I am concerned with the amendment for the same concerns that one of my colleagues mentioned earlier. And also, you know, we've been reaching out to GIDEA. My understanding is they're in some meetings, so the communication's been difficult, but we're getting some text messages back. And my understanding is this is, this is funding that they need to carry this out. They need this funding to be able to carry this project out. This is something that they typically do for most projects, and this would enable them to be able to hire people for the project supervision. And it says it here clearly in the, in the language that's currently in the bill. The scope of work would be for the preparation of procurement-related documents, including the request for proposal. So, before they can even begin that request for proposal, this helps fund them to be able to get the consultants to put that request for proposal together. So, with that, I have to object to the amendment as well. And again, I'm concerned that if this amendment goes through and strikes this out, they won't have the tools necessary to be able to carry this out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Clinton. Senator Shelton, you raise your hand. Ma'am?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask if we can take a recess, so we can get further information and clarification from GIDEA at this time. So, we're already at the 5 o'clock hour. If we can recess till tomorrow morning. I know, as the previous speaker said, folks in GIDEA are in meetings right now, and we'd really like to get some more information.
Mr. Chair, I object. This question was asked specifically to GIDEA, and they gave us their answers, and it was very clear, they want it to be part of the leaseback, or that's how they've always done it before, they've talked about JFK. We don't need to take a recess for that, so...
No, we're going to, it's 5 o'clock. We're going to take a recess till 9:30 tomorrow morning, Madam Speaker. All right? So, we're in recess till 9:30 tomorrow morning.